I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, February 27, 2017, and the time is actually at 7:05 PM, starting early. Okay, Dr. Hillman, there were a couple of items in the table file.
Yes, in the table file tonight was Board Chair Pritchard's summary of the superintendent's mid-year evaluation, and then a number of personnel items, specifically appointments, actually event workers for Rock and Roll Revival coming up at the high school here. Those are your table file additions this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. If there's no objection, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. Okay, we now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School District to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? So, not seeing anyone come forward, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Board members, you have in your packet minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, February 13, 2017. Is there a motion to approve these minutes? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? By Ellen. Any discussion or comments? All those in favor of approving the minutes of the regular school board meeting held on Monday, February 13, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to announcements and recognitions. Dr. Hillman.
Well, yes, and this evening, to start, we have a presentation of a student learning grant by Gary Benson, who is the Director of Project Planning and Development at Kraus Anderson. And I'll ask Gary to come to the microphone and just explain the grant and explain how we want it.
All right, well, thank you Superintendent Hillman, Madam Chair, members of the school board. And on behalf of Kraus Anderson, I'm thrilled to be here tonight to make a presentation of a learning grant. A little bit of background behind this, Kraus Anderson has been providing planning and construction management services to K-12 districts throughout the state of Minnesota for over 25 years now. And because that is such a large focus of our business, we've looked for ways to give back to school districts and to students. And one of the ways that we are able to do that is with every year at the MSBA School Boards Conference in January, at our booth, we have a basket for visitors that come by, whether it's school board members or superintendents, not vendors, but anyone from school districts may put their name in for a drawing, and we award six learning grants from those drawings of the names drawn. And I'm pleased to say that Amy Gorwitz of your school board put her name in, was one of the lucky ones to be drawn, and as a result of that, we have a $1,000 learning grant to present to the district on her behalf. And there's no restrictions to how you use this. We want to see you put it towards something that enhances a learning program, or student achievement, or any way that you see fit like that. And I'm sure you have plenty of opportunities to make use of that. So, at this time, if I could make that presentation.
Oh, you can just go ahead. We pretook the picture, so.
And the check is there. I think we told your name right. No, it's been on since the district.
Thank you very much.
And we typically hand those checks right to Val. No, thank you to Gary and to Kraus Anderson. We know that they have supported K-12 school districts and their construction and learning architectural needs for a long time. They're a big player in the state, and we really appreciate and thank you for giving back to the K-12 school community. A $1,000 learning grants are nothing to shake a stick at. It's a very generous contribution. We can assure you it will be put to great use here at Northfield Public School. So, thank you, Gary.
And we have to get feedback on how it does get used.
We will make sure we let you know how it is spent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you for being here. Okay.
And thank you to Amy for putting us in the drawing. You have to be in it to win it. Yes.
You have the lucky pen.
I have a few more announcements this evening, too.
Yes, oh, yeah, absolutely.
So, I'd like to just, I'm very pleased to announce that in addition to their fourth-place finish at the state girls hockey tournament, as exciting, if maybe, well, just say as exciting, our girls hockey team also were this year's academic champions for Section 1A. This is the first time for a girls hockey team to achieve that accomplishment, and just like their run to the state tournament is nothing short of awesome, because this student athlete for a reason. As you know, we're very proud of the academic reputation that Northfield High School has, and we're very proud of the girls hockey team and their work on the ice, and then also achieving this really auspicious academic honor. So, congratulations to the girls hockey team. We'd also like to announce that Northfield Public Schools Community Services Division's application for Pathway 2 Early Learning Scholarships has received approval by the Minnesota Department of Education. Pending final passage of the fiscal 2018 education budget, no comment.
Don't want to interrupt.
Yeah. The Pathway 2 scholarships allocation for our program is $52,500 for fiscal year 2018 and $52,500 for fiscal year 19. This is the first year we have had the opportunity to apply for two years of funding. The Pathway 2 Early Learning Scholarship supports students in hand-to-hand preschool by covering tuition costs, milk and snack costs, transportation and wraparound childcare. Those two pieces are really essential in making sure that families can access our preschool programming. In total, there were, this year, we have 24 students accessing a Pathway 2 Early Learning Scholarship, and in total, there are 43 students who accessed scholarships for hand-to-hand preschool this year. So, thanks to Director of Community Services Erin Bailey, who really works on these Pathway scholarships. Thanks for your work on that to get those dollars for us. And on a much different note, this is a reminder to families that should there be the need for another full-day cancellation of school, that would be the third full-day closure this year, which we hope does not happen, but if it does, we need to just make sure that students, families, and teachers know that the makeup day would be on Wednesday, June 7. And again, we're very hopeful that that does not happen, but we have that process, and we identify those dates on the calendar. We just think it's important to let folks know. So, those are your announcements for this evening.
So, anyone else have any announcements or recognitions? I had a, is there none from other, I just want to move on before not acknowledging you. So, I have a couple, speaking of snow days, so I don't think that the planners of the band fundraiser waffle dinner would have any way imagined that the both dates would have been snow days. So, unfortunately, the second date of February 24th was a casualty for the waffle dinner, and I just wanted to acknowledge Nancy and Brad Cammack, because not only did they organize it once, but they organized it twice, and never saw it come to fruition. So, I think, you know, they took it all very well, as you have to do, but just wanted to acknowledge how much work they went through twice to try to make that what we know would have been a successful event. And then, secondly, I wanted to acknowledge Northfield News for the wonderful story they did on our district bus drivers. As you know, it was, you had announced at our last school board meeting, and I know our schools did a great job of acknowledging our school bus drivers on February 22nd. So, it was nice to see the Northfield News pick up on that story, and I think we all appreciate Benjamin Bus so much for how seriously they take the safety of our students, but I think they have a really unique sense of understanding of how, what important role our bus drivers play in the lives of our students. So, anyway, it was nice to see them get some ink for that special day for them. Okay, so, is there any other? No, okay. Because this is the second board meeting of the month, we have committee reports. These are reports that board members submit to keep the fellow board and the community apprised of their liaison work with several different district communities. So, we have a total of three reports. Amy Gorwitz has submitted two reports. So, if you want to briefly give us a recap of your two reports, that would be great.
Sure. So, the first one is for the Community Services Advisory Committee, which Erin heads up, and that helps, doesn't it? Thank you. And so, it's for the Community Services Advisory Committee, and we are happy to report that they're, we're a recipient of the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation's 30th Anniversary Early Childhood Grant, and that means Northfield Early Childhood Initiative will be receiving $10,000 for the, I don't know if I can say it right.
Supporting our babies.
Supporting Our Babies Initiative. And then, we also had a wonderful presentation by Hope Langston at the last meeting that covered data on the area preschool experiences and students entering kindergarten, and we talked about it for over an hour. So, I've asked Erin just to pick out a couple key points that she thought would be important to highlight.
Amy's first Community Services Advisor Council meeting came the day after she found out she would be on the Community Services Advisor Council. So, many thanks to her for getting there that first day. I'm happy to share, Hope Langston put this information together, and I'm happy to share it with anyone, because of course, there's a lot of great data in here. I'm going to share two high-level things, because it talks about where kindergarten students are on math and reading by several different breakdown factors, of which it's not as easy to just verbally share with you as it is to read. But a couple of things that are really exciting now, the pre-k team, which would be preschool teachers, and the kindergarten group is meeting now twice a year to have some great conversations. And part of those conversations, what we did this year is we are now tracking students as they leave preschool into kindergarten, into first grade, and so on. So, some data is now, that Hope has available, is where these students, you know, depending on where they were when they entered kindergarten, do they, where do they end up then in first grade, and so on. So, that's really exciting. But then, other, just interesting data from where kids are in preschool, is just some great data about, you know, where are kids that are receiving scholarships most likely attending preschool? And right now, that would be hand-to-hand and Head Start. So, certainly where we are seeing most of those. What is also good, probably good news, too, is, so, hours that children are spending outside the home, whether it be preschool or daycare, low-income students are still spending fewer hours in preschool or in daycare than their peers, but it is up since when we did this in 2015. So, also kind of exciting to see that we are making some more connections in those preschool year students.
So, that was my first report. Excellent. Thank you for helping Erin. And the second report was from my DCSDC committee, and I'm sorry, I still haven't learned exactly what that acronym means, but Mary Grace is here. What does it mean?
District Curriculum and Staff Development Committee.
The District Curriculum and Staff Development Committee. And so far this year, the DCSDC has awarded 15 PLC grants for book studies to attend conferences or book studies or to attend conferences and workshops. There's a whole bunch of different books that our faculty are reading, and there's been quite a few conferences as well. Budgeted with $6,000 at the beginning of the school year, there's $400 left. So, if any teachers are watching this, there's still a little bit of money that's available for these special initiatives. We're also working on the curriculum review cycle, and we'll have more to report on that later, but I think there was consensus that the curriculum needs to be reviewed more often than it currently is. And our company is also reading the book Quiet, and it's about the value of introverts in our society, and we'll have a lot more on that in another time, too, and we plan to share that information with other people in the district, who, there's a lot of good stuff in that book. Thank you.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, so, I submitted the last report, and that was a meeting for the RC, Schools for Equity in Education. Dr. Hillman and I both attended that meeting, and there were two particular highlights of the meeting. One was a legislative update, and we talked briefly about some of the bills coming through or that we would potentially see. And one that has come through is a very important equalization bill, House File 1381. So, we will commit that to memory, House File 1381. They are supposed to introduce the Senate Companion Bill to that, may have been introduced last week, or shortly. Anyway, it will provide $80 million a year, so $40 million in debt service equalization and $40 million in referendum equalization, obviously an extremely important bill for Northfield. Amy, I know you had talked about sort of being able to follow and track really important bills for our district, and so I know that C plans on doing action alerts. So, I know as board members were all getting the C communication, and so they will be doing some action alerts when they feel like it's really time to weigh in with our legislators. So, that's good news that that's been introduced, and again, House File 1381. The second discussion at the meeting was extremely interesting, and it was around the Student Discipline Working Group. And last year, the 2016 legislature legislation established a Student Discipline Working Group, and their charge was to review Minnesota statutes related to student discipline and to make recommendations on improving school discipline, practices, procedures, et cetera. So, it was very interesting, though, the working group's focus centered around the disproportionality of discipline for students of color and school safety. In addition, what really became a very complex issue and quite a contentious discussion within the working group was their recommendation around a review of the word "willful." And so, what has really transpired since I wrote this report is Representative Ron Creschah introduced legislation just last week that would remove the word "willful" from the Pupil Fair Dismissal Act, which, when it was introduced in committee, received the same amount of contentious discussion that it did as part of the working group. So, the, we know it's very complex, and we will be watching this really closely. I understand that policy bills need to come out of committee by March 16, 17. So, we'll see how that one comes out of committee. But that word "willful" really requires a lot of really careful consideration as to whether that be removed, or how that word becomes a part, or it's already a part of policy, but if that, if there's some changes to that. So, I think you'll see some of that come through, through our MSBA news feed as well. C did have representation on that committee, so we did have someone who had firsthand knowledge of the work of the committee. They also brought a number of disciplinary-type recommendations, a total of about 10, to the legislators. We'll see how they address those, but it appears that the review of the word "willful" in the Fair People Dismissal Act may be one of the most, as they had said, one of the most contentious and controversial bills this session. So, we will watch that one develop closely. Okay, was there any questions? Okay. So, now, we are ready to move on to items for discussion. We have Carrie Duba, who is a school psychologist at the high school, and she will be presenting on social-emotional curriculum, social-emotional learning curriculum.
Yes, I'm Carrie Duba. I'm one of the school psychologists at Northfield High School. I also work extensively with the interventions at the high school. So, we're looking at social-emotional learning as falling in some regard in that capacity, too. I'm a member, as a school psychologist, I'm a member of the District Student Support Services Team, and this presentation is a summary of the work that the District Student Support Services Team did in investigating social-emotional learning curriculum over the last, actually, three years. So, if you're not aware what social-emotional learning is, this is a nice definition, "The process through which children and adults acquire and effectively apply the knowledge, attitudes, and skills necessary to understand and manage." This is where it gets important, manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships, and make responsible decisions. Begins in preschool and continues through high school. So, one of the charges, when we were investigating our curricular options, is we wanted to look at something that had a nice flow from early childhood up through 12th grade. Now, that plan morphed a little bit, but I think it did for the very best and most prudent of reasons as we go. Now, I think the other thing to remember about social-emotional learning is that it's caught and it's taught. And so, those are a couple of different things that we considered as we were doing our investigation. So, this is the timeline. We actually, the District Student Support Services Team, which is comprised of school psychologists, school social workers, school counselors, the district wellness coordinator, and our cultural liaison, we meet regularly. And about three years ago, we were, the administrative cabinet, as it was called at the time, right, had requested that we look into the various curricula that would support social-emotional learning. So, we did a pretty lengthy review process, and at that time, we just got that far. That's about where we were to, that was the work we needed to accomplish at that time. We've revisited it from September to December of this year. We wanted to look at the curricula again and kind of go through that process and tighten up our recommendations that we made. In January, we presented our recommendations and this summary to the leadership team of Northfield. And then, the process that we're in right now, February through March, is we are looking for that stakeholder feedback. We've had opportunities at all of the elementary schools, early childhood, the middle school, and right here at the high school for parents to have an opportunity to review the recommendations that our team made and to provide us with some feedback. So, the green circle is this is where we are right now. And then, in April, we will aggregate that feedback, look for patterns, and present that back to the leadership team. So, as I was looking at this, so I've done this presentation a few times, and as I was looking at this, I kind of wish I had reversed the order of this. But clearly, when we were looking for materials, we were looking for those that would align with the mission and vision of Northfield Public Schools. And you can't read that, but of course, we need to have someplace where our students are feeling safe, where they can be successful, and we are always keeping the vision of the district in mind as we move forward. So, again, this is our team. Oh, and this, that's right, we also have our pals as part of our District Student Support Services Team, which is a very nice addition to our work that we do. And the reason that it made sense for us to look at this is that we are often on the front line to responding to some behaviors in the classroom. We stand as partners with our teaching staff to help with the student behaviors that are interfering in successful school functioning. It is our area of expertise. We collect data on this. We are the interface between family and therapists and the school. So, we had this charge to work with our community partners as well. RCMHC is a space saver, and it stands for the Rice County Mental Health Collective. James Coulter is our representative. He's the chair of that, coordinator of that, and he worked with us in this process as well. HCI and the Northfield Promise were critical partners in this, because we were looking at our shared resources, we're looking at the collection of data, the benchmarks, and we want to make sure that we are honoring that whole idea of collective impact as we move forward. So, here's what we considered when we were looking at our materials, the extensive research, and there is quite a bit of it, on the evidence of effectiveness, best practices for implementation, what are the essential skills that are important for our students, and what mental, emotional, chemical health curricula are out there. We also looked in to other districts in other states who had established social-emotional learning standards, so that it could help frame what we were looking at for our goals. And then additionally, and I think that this, I guess from my perspective, and the perspective of others who work in the same capacity as I do in as we did this review, is that we have recently been trained in what's called the Prepare Curriculum, which is a crisis response, crisis prevention response and preparedness curriculum. And while social-emotional learning certainly is not, doesn't exist solely as a crisis prevention strategy, I think it is prudent for us to always keep that in mind. And when I say crisis, I want to be clear that crises occur on a continuum. And I think we tend to think of crises over here as something, you know, that we would all uniformly recognize as a crisis. But I think every day, our students are dealing with issues that become crises to them. And as long as we are preparing our students and our staff to recognize and develop those skills for responding in the moment, we have fewer here, and we are well-prepared for anything else. One of our great resources was the Collaborative for Academic Social Emotional Learning Castle. Castle has done a lot of the research on social-emotional learning, and they've done a lot of meta-analysis on the research that's been done by other groups. One of the first things that we did, and I realize you can't see this, but if I, it's sufficient for you to just look at how populated it is, actually, because what we did is, the first thing we did was an inventory of anything that was already going on in the district that had to do with climate, social-emotional climate, direct instruction in social-emotional learning, mental health, emotional regulation, positive behavior interventions and supports. So, I just wanted to make sure that you could kind of get an appreciation for how much good work is already being done, good people doing great things. But I also think that it's pretty evident that there was a need that people were responding to. They were pulling programs together, they were, teachers were asking their pals, were asking the social workers, we were pulling programs, we were working with the Rice County Mental Health Collective that had piloted some programs with us. So, this idea of addressing the social-emotional learning has been happening in our district all along. It just hasn't been very uniform, and I think we've missed out on the collective impact of having something that is a shared resource and a shared vision. So, I think that's pretty powerful. We looked at those activities that are about prevention, crisis prevention, and we looked at how far those programs reached. Were all of our students getting exposed to this? And so, there were clearly gaps, because this wasn't something that was uniformly addressed. And that's something else that I think is worth looking at and making sure that all of our students have an opportunity to be exposed to this, if it's good enough for some of our students. And we considered our data, one of my favorite things to do. So, we wanted to describe what our need was. So, we looked at our discipline data, the office discipline referrals, fixed reports at elementary school, and we looked at those, because that's the best barometer we have of student behavior and teacher response. And I've said this at almost every group that I've spoken to, I think what's interesting about social-emotional learning is that if you look at the research, one of the outcomes and the measures of effectiveness that they often refer to is a decrease in the ODRs, office discipline referrals. And when I look at that, I often think, does that reflect a change in the student behavior, or does that reflect a change in the adult behavior? And I think either one of those is progress, and so, that's one that we want to make sure that we're looking at. Special education referrals, of course, we're always looking at the number of students who are referred for evaluation for special education. We looked at some particular categories, emotional behavioral disorder, because it speaks to the emotional behavioral dysregulation. OHD is other health disabilities, and that would include students with diagnoses of things like ADHD, for example. Our EBD category would also include students who have diagnoses of anxiety and depression. I also put "and referrals," because all of us on the District Student Support Services Team field calls from families and referrals, where they say, "I think that we need to look at my student or my child, because they're not making progress." And so, that's an informal measure, but we do get quite a few of those. So, we're looking at those students with intrusive behavior, skill deficits, and self-regulation. Section 504 plans, by definition, require a diagnosis, and 95% of those diagnoses are ADHD, anxiety, depression. So, we're looking at those mental health diagnoses. At secondary, we cannot overstate the importance of paying attention to attendance. We know that at secondary, and I mean, upper, middle school, and high school, that that represents students who are not able, without a doubt, not able to marshal their resources at 6:30 in the morning to get up and get on that bus. That is a critical piece that we want to make sure that we monitor. We have also had our students in the district take the developmental assets profile. There are questions there that we have pulled out and we've looked at for questions about skills, self-worth, and attitudes. I do, in particular, want to mention the developmental asset profile. We are adequate as a district in most of those areas in terms of what our students report for assets, but I really want to encourage us to think, like, this is a situation where we could go from adequate to good to great, right? We don't, I think that to just say, like, "Well, our students report adequate," is probably insufficient for who we want to be as a district. And we also took items from the Minnesota Student Survey. We have questions about feelings, engagement, safety, how kids feel about themselves. We have questions about feelings, engagement, safety, how kids feel about themselves. I was just reviewing the, I was just reviewing the data today. And in ninth grade, 38%, I'm going to say 38%, report that they infrequently to never express emotions in an acceptable fashion. Now, that's a self-report, and I think that's really interesting, right? So that's a kind of measure that we'd like to be able to monitor. And that's what we use to describe our current reality. And then, again, related to the previous slide, a lot of the other elementary buildings are collecting data on behavior. This is a, this has come up time and again, and they're collecting that information so they can understand what their need is and how they need to respond. So I mentioned Castle. Castle has identified these five social-emotional learning competencies. And if you'll reflect back on that first quote, self-management, self-awareness, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And you can see how they fit together. The orange is that self-awareness, that self-regulation. The green is how do I work with others, which is, we are in a corporate learning environment. We are learning in community. Amy mentioned the book Quiet. I think that having our students and having our staff be aware of temperamental differences and being able to recognize what that means when you're a learner in community is pretty important. And then responsible decision-making at every level. It feels essentially critical when we're starting to work with our high school students who are considering their transitions and making responsible decisions about their choices in their life, but at every level. So those are the competencies that we considered when we looked at the curriculum. And there is a lot out there. And what we ended up with, we made three primary recommendations. Second Step, which is an EC8 curriculum, early childhood eight. Strong Kids, which has an EC to grade 12 curriculum. And Lion's Quest, which is an early childhood to grade 12. Now, as we did our work and as we investigated, and it is really, I think, wise to have it be a district initiative from early childhood to 12, so there's some shared language, there's a shared vision. But all of the materials, and I think there's a lot of sort of face validity to this, some obvious need for this, but all of the materials have a pretty significant break at eighth grade, and they do something different, 9-12. What the research has shown is that direct instruction in standalone lessons, something like a homeroom, are less effective in high school. This is not the strategy that we want to pursue. And so there is much, much stronger research to support that early childhood to eighth grade to deliver those lessons that are, they may be considered standalone, but they can be academically integrated. So the, after we did our presentation to the leadership team, we really determined that, and I'll talk about this in a little bit, that we'll do something different at the high school, so that we are looking at, our recommendations were for curricula that went EC8. And you can see the objectives of each of those. Self-regulation, executive function skills, making friends, they're all that what we have kind of talked about. And I think, did I, let me see what comes here, no. Not only outcomes and the competencies were something that we looked at and the alignment with the district vision, but a critical component of our review was, how is this material to be delivered? And what is the flexibility in implementation, and does that flexibility allow for fidelity, right? So we know that this is daunting to, I think, teachers and to staff and to bring in one more thing to put on, to put on their plate. And so one of the things that we were very mindful of is what is the way in which this can still be delivered, all of this be delivered, and still maintain the fidelity that we can get the outcomes that the research would suggest that we're going to get. So most of them offer standalone lessons that are pretty scripted, that require a little novel prep for teachers, right? I would never suggest that teachers don't prep everything they do, because I think they do, and there's just no getting around that because they are professionals and it matters. But it doesn't require going out and creating something, so they're scripted materials. But we also looked at, what if it were delivered throughout the day in different curricular areas? What if it were delivered in a one, for example, morning meeting lesson? How does that work, and do we still expect the same outcomes? So that's the other thing that recommended these three curricula to us, is that they could be delivered in a variety of ways. They could be delivered by the classroom teacher, they could be implemented by a pals, by a social worker, by a school psychologist, in partnership, in any variety of ways. So it allows the building teams to determine what's the best method of delivery of this material, okay? And still get the same strong outcomes. And here are the outcomes, as you can see. You can just read those. And Lion's Quest is a little bit clearer how they provided that information. So this is where we are right now. We're getting our stakeholder feedback. We've gone through nearly all of that. We still have, Community School is coming up on March 2nd. Yeah. So we're still doing one more presentation for families at the community school at Greenville Park. But we do have some pictures, and they're hard to see, but we had some good turnout with the teachers to review, and then we had parents come here on Thursday when we were waiting for the snow, but it held off. And we did have quite a few parents come through and provide some feedback. So we've gotten some very good feedback from staff and from parents about the materials that we have. We've also allowed a little bit of feedback about SEL in Northfield Public Schools. I will say this, that was never our focus. We weren't re-deciding whether or not SEL was happening. It's one of our near-term priorities, and so that it was happening. So the work that the DSSST did was only about what might be the best materials to help us to meet that priority. So at the high school, we have a social-emotional learning committee, lots of committees, and we are looking with our college and career readiness subgroup, because as you might imagine, social-emotional learning needs at the high school, quite complex. They, on the one hand, I think of them as a continuum from mental health to college and career readiness and essential skills, but it's actually not a continuum. I think it's more like a Mobius strip, like one feeds the other. We don't get readiness for college and career unless we are mentally stable and we are able to regulate our feelings and our emotions and our behaviors. We continue to collaborate with the middle school. We are thrilled to expect that we'll have some ninth graders coming to us with some new vocabulary and some new skills, and so we're going to incorporate that into our planning. We are continuing to work with the Rice County Mental Health Collective and James Coulter. We have quite a bit of high school data that we're going to go through and have it inform us about our climate, discipline, all of those things that help us to determine how to provide opportunities for students to catch these and be taught. We want to develop clear objectives, priorities, and we're looking at different programming options since we do know that that direct instruction is less effective at high school. That's supposed to say questions? Do you have any questions?
Excellent presentation. Thank you so much, Carrie. And lots of information here, so I imagine board members have some questions or comments for Carrie. Amy?
So what's the timeline for sort of implementing something?
Right. I didn't go past that, but in April, we'll provide that feedback to the leadership team. And I think at that time, the leadership team will make the decision about which option to proceed with, and we expect implementation to begin in the fall, which is so exciting. If I could editorialize.
Absolutely. Questions, other questions? Rob?
I'm thinking back to the presentation that was made about the trip to Menominee Falls, I think it was, and I think you or someone said, talking about curriculum, that it's not just buying a book or a set of curriculum, but it's creating culture. So could you talk about, there was this long inventory of things that are already being done, how getting a new set of books or something would fit in with the culture that's already being established at the Northfield Schools?
Right. Right. I do think that one of the things that is beneficial about the social-emotional learning and being intentional about how we approach it, first of all, we've begun the work by identifying it as a priority, because the district has already said that this is a critical component to educating the students in our community. I think that has started the process. And so as we continue to develop a language with which we use with our children, with our students, it starts to shape the lens that we view them with, right? And so we know that relationship building and having those opportunities to talk about that self-regulation and the emotions and feelings changes your interactions with students. So that is, hopefully, the beginning of a culture shift. That's what I, I guess that's what I mean by when I think about what changes and why do we get a reduction in behavior? I think it's a little bit of a student change, and I think it's a lot of an adult change, too, and how we view behavior, how we understand behavior, how we can begin to understand behavior is about, I was going to say one thing, I'm going to change it, is about making mistakes because we haven't learned it yet. I think that changes it, too.
So then it would seem like it would be better to use this, as you were saying, as a, not just taught in a health class or in a homeroom or whatever, but have it integrated throughout the day so that teachers in different subjects are reinforcing these skills that are part of the curriculum?
Right. And that is the most ideal implementation strategy, and that is the one that has the most robust outcomes, and as we like to say, has the best legs, right? We see long-term outcomes from that style of implementation, but, and that may be something that comes, and maybe Greg could speak to that, but, you know, certainly is what we're starting, or Dr. Hillman, you can speak to that, too. Certainly what we're starting with is getting the materials here, getting the language here, getting the behavior, adult behavior started, and then the rest we can build capacity for.
Yeah, and I think that you're going to the implementation question, Rob, which I completely, wholeheartedly agree, that the culture is that underlying foundation of what we're looking at. What I would say in the chart that you're referencing, I would articulate that, that we have pockets of wow happening, and that what we really need is to make sure there's consistency and alignment across that, and sometimes that resource is the piece that helps narrow your focus and your vision, so we're not chasing a bunch of things that are great, but maybe aren't necessarily as aligned or related to get that collective impact that Carrie has mentioned. So I, just a couple of things on implementation, as I continue to hear as this develops at the elementary level with the feedback pieces, I think that there's a very happy connection between this kind of curricula and our commitment for years to the responsive classroom approach. If you think about what Carrie is talking about, if you've had a chance, if you have a chance to see any of the materials, it is really a nice match between the morning meeting style, and if you think about it at the elementary level, integrated is primary with the classroom teacher, of course, involving specialist teachers in the language development and those kinds of pieces, but the main component fits very nicely with that morning meeting. I've not heard anybody from any of the feedback sessions or principals tell me that they're thinking of anything other than the morning meeting at this point, but, you know, we're open for development. As principal, middle school principal Greg Jelenow, and I have talked about this, and as Greg has talked about it with Carrie and members of his team from, on the DSSST, we've looked at a number of different models about how this could potentially work at the middle school. And yet, when we think about when we start strong, and what's the most, what's the most efficient way to get the ball rolling? Greg did a great job of looking across the number of different areas. One area that we know, we have too many standards, frankly, for the amount of instructional time that we have, is health. Currently, we have health in sixth and eighth grade, it is not in seventh grade. And yet, what we hear from both the sixth and eighth grade health teachers is that there's a lot of standards that they have to cover in a very short amount of time. We also think about the Northfield Promise and our collective goals around supporting all career and college pathways. And if you think about the world's best workforce component, that essential piece of having kids developing that plan before they hit ninth grade, we have had a struggle, and where do we place that within the middle school curriculum as well? And so Greg brought me a recommendation, and while I'll be bringing you a request, most likely at the first or second March board meeting, will be about adding an FTE to the middle school to expand our health curriculum so that it would be taught in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. And those health teachers, because they'd have three years to cover the health standards, would also be able to redistribute those in such a way that they would also be able to address the social-emotional curriculum and the career and college readiness benchmarks. Now, the key thing is, when you think of a social-emotional curriculum, I think all of us immediately go to a scope and sequence in one of our core areas like social studies or reading or mathematics. If I'm remembering correctly, in fact, one of the curriculum had a total of 15 lessons?
Right. They have like 15 to 32, I think, was the high lessons.
So the key thing is, it isn't like you're talking about a reading or a mathematics or a social studies or a language arts curriculum. You're talking about something that could be very easily integrated into a class like the one that we're talking about. It also has the advantage with Principal Jelenow's work to provide some more options and some more structure to the seventh grade schedule in terms of, unfortunately, from time to time, depending on some student selections, we have some students who might have two study halls, is that correct, Greg?
Correct.
And so, again, looking to provide that more robust core curricula. And I, I'm a responsive classroom person, I've been trained, I was trained as an elementary school principal, and I truly believe that if the social is as important as the academic because one feeds the other. And I'm a big believer in the work of Dr. Maslow, Abraham Maslow, and those foundational skills that sometimes our students can't get past to access the curriculum. And so putting those three things together at middle school and coming to you to request for us to be able to spend one FTE to really solve three things that we have struggled with for some time, I think is some really creative thinking on Greg's part. And really, that was some good work in a number of meetings that Greg has run with middle school staff, getting feedback, asking feedback about what would the best strategy be, some surveys that Greg did. And I, he had to convince me, because I always ask that second question before I'm going to bring a request to you for an additional FTE. But Greg has convinced me that this is the most efficient and best way at this point in time to deliver this to middle school. So Greg, if you would maybe share a little bit more about that?
Yep, I will. And Rob, the other piece is, you're right. I mean, perfect, we really want to implement these concepts into all our classes, and that's really, that's where PBIS and this SEL curriculum kind of come together. PBIS, part of the kind of a last, final, big hurrah for implementation, is to have the PBIS language to be kind of filtering through all of our classrooms. That's the part you're talking about. So the SEL kind of is a complement to that. So we use our PBIS to try, so whether it's math or social studies or it doesn't matter, that's where that component comes in, and they are related and tied. I know one of the questions some of our staff has is, will PBIS go away? Absolutely not. If you think of the wheel that Carrie had on there, you had all the terrific work that our families do, and then inside of that is the, actually, the building, and that's the PBIS piece. And then now we're looking at the classroom, which is the SEL.
Could I just ask a question?
Sure.
Based on that, I mean, when I was in elementary school, one of the places where I was the most misbehaved was in the lunchroom, and I drove the lunch ladies crazy. So, I mean, and one of the things that you talked about with the Menominee Falls presentation was that it was through the entire school. It wasn't just in the classroom, it was the custodians and the people working in the lunchroom and everything. So, I mean, is this something that extends to the entire school so that everyone kind of knows what the expectations are for?
Yep. It does. When we rolled out, when we came up, when we started our PBS kind of journey, we got input from our DEAs, from our office staff, from our custodians, and we made sure everyone was on board with that. And with our recognition program now, with our tickets, our pride tickets we pass out, it doesn't matter, any adult in the building can pass them out, it can be a substitute, it could be a custodian, and that does happen to students. So that, yes, there is that connection, so it is, truly is building wide. As a matter of fact, I get comments from parents that they actually use the language at home as well, which is also awesome.
And I think the key thing, when you're talking about the Menominee- And I think the key thing, when you're talking about the Menominee Falls presentation, and we have another group of people who are going to visit Menominee Falls, I think it's very easy to look at that and forget that what I really think, what I, my big takeaway from that presentation wasn't about anything that, you know, you're not adding, it's about mindset. And I think if you think about all of the different pieces that we're talking about, what Greg has talked about with SEL, in terms of that specific intentional instruction, and then you think about the PBIS component, we already are halfway or even further on the mindset piece. And so I think that's, that commitment to continuous improvement and that commitment to all of us using some of that more uniform and unified approach, I think are the key things. And I think the middle school is really ahead of the game on that with the work that they've done in terms of the PBIS expectations. And you can't go 10 feet in the middle school without seeing a PBIS sign, you know, reinforcing the expectations for that particular area. In fact, they have specific expectations for the cafeteria, Rob, which they apparently didn't have at Trumanburg Elementary School. So I think the key thing is that we continue to get better, we continue to look at how are we able to partner really quality existing frameworks together, and then continuing to work on that mindset, which I think is really essential. So I also just want to comment that I think, if you think about it, this presentation is our strategic plan in action. When we adopted the near-term priorities, we developed from 188 people coming to plenty, plenty of sessions that we had offered, and then looking at our thought exchange information, building and fostering relationships, commitment to social emotional health for all. If you remember when we worked with Dr. Miles, it's about one of those things that are 30, 60, and 90 days. And we're probably a little bit past close to 100 days. And I think that you're seeing a presentation tonight that is actually taking a near-term action step and having a somewhat really well-crafted solution on the horizon for implementation, you know, next year. And there was a lot of foundational work that happened before that, but what I'm really pleased with, what Carrie and the rest of the team have done, and Mary and all of the staff, and all the people who've come to the sessions and provided feedback, is that we are living the strategic plan, which is what we always want to do. We spent time on it, we have a very clear vision. She actually talked about the vision first. Thank you. Makes me very happy. And then this directly addresses one of the near-term priorities. So I really appreciate that the work's been doing. And I really appreciate Greg thinking about, I think the elementary school's a little bit of a, and it's not easy, but it's a simpler animal to look at, because we've already had that commitment to responsive classroom. But I really appreciate Greg working with his entire staff and saying, what's the best way that we can do this really good thing for kids in a way that's efficient, that provides continuity of instruction, but yet allows everyone to participate? And I think that he has found a really good combination that gets us multiple needs out of one position.
Ellen, you had a question?
A couple of questions. So first, thank you. I think the last time I saw this, there were six, and now we're down to three. So it's really exciting how quickly the progress is happening. So I really appreciate everybody's time on this. So, just a clarifying question. So I understand the distinction between the, thinking about the implementation differently at the middle school versus elementary schools, but will the elementary schools, you had talked about having different intervention contexts, is that, is the, is the vision to have each building really think of how they're getting implemented differently, or will the elementaries have more uniformity? Or do we not know yet?
I'm not sure that. I think the idea is like, responsive classroom is in, robustly in place in most of the elementary buildings. And so the best fit for the SEL curricula and responsive classroom has been to deliver the lessons during that morning meeting, and to integrate it in that process in that way. That is what the discussion has been framed like, how it is actually done in practice. I would imagine to be pretty similar, but of course, we really wanted to honor the flexibility of the, of the teachers in the buildings.
And I think, I do think, everything that I've heard so far, I think we talk about having a unified approach to things at the elementary schools. I have not heard anything to the contrary. If we had a building and said, hey, we'd really like to look at this, we would of course, you know, explore that and look and see, would that be a better solution across all three buildings? I think, you know, again, the key thing is this dovetails so nicely with the work that's already been done in responsive classroom, or is being done in responsive classroom.
So yeah, is that a good one?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the other thing I was curious about is that I'm assuming we're thinking about professional development, particularly if it's a culture shift, that it's going to involve instructional staff, DEAs, everyone. So is, does the material come with some elements of professional development built in, or?
Well, I think the key thing is we'd be working with Mary Grace Hansen during our pre-service workshop next year. There will be training in terms of, and how that training looks is gonna be dependent upon the option that we choose. We know that there's a variety of different pieces of training. Do you want to talk just a little bit about what the training looks like?
Right.
Because it is different.
Right. And that was the, another component. Thanks for bringing that up, because that was another component that we looked at, because of course, that's a critical piece for, for everyone who's gonna be implementing it. So we looked at those that had a readily accessible training, and all of them come with, you know, online training. They could, we have an option for onsite training for some of them. One of them, if I'm looking not to, you know, one of them, as we look at all the feedback that we've received so far, that doesn't provide that onsite training, is also one that's not really been in the running. And so there are training options. Interestingly enough, if you look at the social emotional learning as a whole, and training requirements for that, research would say the more important aspect of teacher training and professional development comes on the, what is SEL? Why are we doing SEL? And then the specifics about how you deliver the materials is secondary to that.
Thank you. Excellent questions. Other questions board members have?
I had a couple of questions. First of all, I want to thank you for this great, great presentation, and it's so great to have it, you know, in front of when we will, you know, when you'll come to the final decision about where you're headed. But it's just great to see the work that's being done. I had, well, I wanted to comment on the definition of social emotional learning. I'm so glad that you provided that for us, because I think it's really good. I think we kind of talk about it, maybe everyone, you know, has a little bit of understanding of it, but this, this is really great. And then I wanted also to thank Greg for telling us how that really meshes with PBIS, because that was one of my questions as well. And then Carrie, knowing that you're the data person you are, when you looked at the Lions Quest, you know, their outcomes, are those some of the similar sort of outcomes that we would be expected to, to see, or how we're going to measure the effectiveness of the curriculum?
And when you say similar, do you mean, will we anticipate the same percentage of decrease in ODRs, for example?
No, just the same benchmarks.
Right. And so we, we will start with the data that we have access to. At this point, one of the things I think is important as we proceed, is that we're going to use the data that we have access to to describe our baseline. And then after initial implementation, we'll return to that data, and it will be ODRs, and it will be referrals, and it'll be special education referrals and services. But at some point, we may want to consider as a district, a different measure. We would collect a different kind of baseline data or screening data that would be informed by the materials that we've chosen, and that that's something that we could track as we, and, and as long as it's something that we felt is a proxy for the measure that we want. For example, if we know that if this, if we see growth in this, we would expect to see an improvement in our attendance and in our behaviors and in our academic performance of our students. So that's, that's ongoing.
Perfect. Thank you. And then are you able to just briefly share some of the comments that you received, feedback you had said was positive from parents and teachers? Can you share?
I have the, I have the parent.
I'm not sure what you said.
Would you like me to share just, we said, and there are comments about each of the curricula? Would you like to hear that?
Just the overall comments.
Yep. And so.
You may or not have been necessarily prepared, but just sort of getting a general sense for what the group's comments were and feedback?
I would, the feedback with regard to whether or not to implement it has been positive. There is caution about how it happens. I think that that is prudent, and I think it's wise, and we proceed accordingly. But here's a parent comment. I love this idea. These are, these are important for students to learn about. I like the continuity. Please keep communication lines open with parents. I should mention that, is the materials all have a home communication component too. When the parents came and they spoke to us, that was their question, is they said, well, this is awesome, but, you know, sometimes parents need a little support at home, which is true. And so they all come with materials so that you would understand what's going on in the classroom, plus activities that you can try. I don't know. I don't want to get too specific, though. They all look like good programs. I like the strong kids best. So generally, that's how they go. Thank you for letting us come in. I would really like to see this be put in. It's, really seems like it's, these materials have it all together. Thank you. So that's pretty much how they go.
Okay. No, it's good to get, to get a sense for that. And then my last question for Greg, I believe Dr. Hillman mentioned that within that FTE with social emotional learning curriculum, there are almost, maybe some opportunity for career and college readiness as well?
Yes. I mean, they're also, that committee's also looking at some possible curricular options. And that was part of the reasoning rationale behind this, is when I kind of approached our staff and asked for feedback, basically saying punch holes in it, give me your concerns, and looking at it, time out of class, time from class period, whether it be social studies, math, or whatever, that was obviously a concern. The vast majority of people thought was worthwhile. There's some other questions that I've been trying to clarify. But packaging it together, like, we could kind of see that the current college readiness piece is kind of the next in line, so to speak. And so this is the ability when we take two years, sixth and eighth grade, where the curriculum we spread out over three, it frees up that space, where they can then implement both pieces, the SEL and the career and college readiness. Now, in sixth grade, it may look a little bit different for career and college readiness. Jane Striflin and Corey Yamri, they go into classrooms and they do that piece, and they would like to actually continue to do that. And they'll, so right, as of right now, that part may be a little bit different. But, but yes, that's one of the other rationales.
And Julie, I also think, if you think about that, if you think about the way those three tie together, I'm gonna look at Carrie as I say this, so she can give me some thumbs up or thumbs down, but if you think about the health curriculum, it involves physical health, it involves mental health, and the social emotional health is a really easy tie in there. When you think about career and college readiness, one of the things that I have heard over and over, people talking about career and college readiness, not just from the perspective of kids having a, a plan for the future about their career, what that tells me is we're working on developing a positive future narrative for kids, that they see themselves being successful in the future. That's really a core of a lot of the career and college readiness pieces. It's about what, not only do you, what do you want to be to grow up, when you grow up, and how do you get there, but having that positive future narrative. And what we know is, I believe, in my experience, is that when kids have that, they see themselves as being successful positively in the future, that is a strong driver for positive mental health. And I think all of those things together, even though they seem like disparate components, they do flow together very nicely in a system that seems to not only solve three independent issues, but work so in a way that is, I think, is good for all kids in, in those three particular areas. So I think it feeds that career and college readiness, that I've had physical health training, I'm talking about mental, and social health, social emotional health, and then I'm capstoning it with, this is what I'm gonna be, and I know how to get there, and I have a plan. And if I, if I don't get there right away, I have the skills to persevere and do those other things. So I think that that's a way that it really dovetails very nicely together.
I should also say that I had a conversation with Dan Rees-Grave in the eighth grade health, and as well as Mark Langivan and Dan Kust in sixth grade, with the science, and they teach the health component there, prior to any of this, saying, what do you guys think? And they were totally on board. As a matter of fact, Mark and Dan Kust, that already right away said this is a natural bid for.
Excellent. Okay, excellent.
Can I, um, yes, Carrie? I'm sorry, Rob, this has been kind of driving me crazy. I just, so I'll be brief. So in terms of the climate and the culture, I, I think that's the difference between the ca and the tot. And PBIS, and all of the buildings are adopting PBIS strategies, which is a cultural shift. And that is that piece of, how do you change the culture and how we interact and how we think about behavior? The key, and I think this is really important, is it teaches, there are specific lessons. It teaches you how to be a corporate learner, how to learn in community. But the difference with the social emotional learning is it really talks about you. Like, what can you learn? What are the strategies? What can you learn about yourself? And then, so there's a kind of a community in, and then there's an individual out kind of component. And so they're very complementary. Okay. I don't know if that clarified it, but it helped me.
Okay. This was really excellent. Do board members have any final comments or questions before we move on, Greg? I want to thank Carrie and Greg for being here, and please extend Carrie to the entire team our thanks for the great work that's been done. We really appreciate it, and we look forward to hearing from you in a few months, as you come back. Okay, great. Thank you. So we go on for, second item for discussion is QCOM. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and I just wanted to come back and close the loop here, after our brief discussion at the last board meeting about the possibly yet submitting a QCOM application prior to March 15th. And, you know, during that discussion, I heard a number of reservations from board members, specifically around the inclusion of the $91 per pupil non-voter approved levy that statute allows us to do under QCOM. And I heard a lot of discussion about timing, in terms of with the discussion that the board is having right now about the possible renewal and maybe expansion of an operating levy, some possible bond options. And I heard a number of concerns just around the timing of this. I want to be real clear, I also heard board members very supportive of the great work that the teaching team did in terms of developing the plan. But I just, I think it's very essential, before we put an application, that we know it's something that you'd be comfortable with and approving. And so what I'm suggesting at this point, recommending is that we press the pause button on QCOM until the 17, 18 window. I think a key thing in that particular piece is that, in talking with the lead teachers on the QCOM committee, talking with a couple of folks, that we do have some money from the teacher development and evaluation funding, the one-time funding that the state did a couple of years ago, because we're not in QCOM, where they get some money every year, we got that one time, about $90,000. And we've been very conservative in holding on to that money and how we would plan to spend it, because we wanted to make it maximize as long as possible. And so I plan to continue to have discussions about how could we use that $90,000 to implement some parts of the plan, maybe not in the full way that the plan has been put together at this point, but some pieces that would help us move down the line on some components of the plan. I, I believe under the rules of the TDE, it would have to be the professional development portion of the plan, but I think that's a way we can get some of those things started. I think that will give us an opportunity to come back and look at, as we move forward with our master facilities plan process, it looks at how that non-voter approved levy could fit in down the line. It is true, as we know, most districts do the $91 per pupil levy who are in QCOM, but I don't think as many of them have the same very generous operating levy, voter-approved levy that we have. I think the key thing is also, we also need to note that the QCOM coffers are currently empty. And it's going to take legislative approval this term to fund the 13 schools that are currently in line. So, you know, there is a reasonable possibility we could have submitted the application and still not been able to move forward. But what I want to do is, I want to thank the association, the team that has worked on that to this point. I want to be really clear, I'm pressing, we think we should be pressing the pause button. We're not saying that we're going away from it. We're gonna stop for a moment till we can get some of these other discussions taken care of, and then revisit. And specifically looking at some of the components that we have money from the department that we could implement at this point, and then look at are there other ways we can leverage the work that was done in the plan with the resources that we have available at this time. But I just, what I heard from folks at the last meeting, from just the discussion, was really wanting to have some kind of closure on this at this point, because of the rapidly approaching timeline. So I have talked with the folks, the leadership of that particular committee, and just explained that to them, and talked with them about that, and let them know what my suggestion was gonna be here this evening. But I just wanted to let you know that and ask if there are any further questions at this point.
Any other questions or comments board members have?
And we'll look forward to continuing to look at what are the strategies that we can use to use the plan, and also to look at, do we make an application in the 17, 18 year?
Well, thank you. I appreciate that we're sort of closing the loop a little bit to our discussion at our prior board meeting. And again, the comment I had shared was just, I think back in August, September, we wouldn't have envisioned that our district would be in a place where we are now, which, which is a much different place. And so I think it's, I think that, hearing no objections, it appears that the board is supportive of pausing. But it's, it's really not a pause, it's sort of a pause and a slow, a slow button on the treadmill, because you have some, some ideas about how you have some ideas about how some of those aspects could be put into place, and really almost pilot some of that for the district, to where we would be that much further ahead as we move forward for 1718.
And the $90,000 that we have, that we have been intentional, will allow us to do some good components. It will not allow us to do the full plan, as has been discussed. We just have to be very clear with that. But it will give us a chunk of dollars that we can really attack some of the areas to start with as we move forward. So it's just a very, it's going to be, it's a limited amount of money.
Ellen, you do have a comment?
Sorry, I just had, I had one question. So if we're putting, pressing slow button or whatever, and we're thinking we would potentially be applying, you said 1718, how does that work at the state, anywhere in this biennial budget? So do they, is that something they approve, though, every year?
So there's been a couple of different ways. In the second year of the biennium, you know, as you know, from time to time, while, there's not always education funding in the second year of the biennium, from time to time, there have been targeted, if you remember, I think one time, we got even a little bit on the formula, which we'll always take. But the fact is that we have seen them do things for specific educational programs in the second year of the biennium. I think there will be especially an appetite to do something like that if they can't get it as part of this legislative cycle. And while I have seen that there are some bills that are including proposals for QCOM funding, when we look at all of the other things in the governor's budget, the fact is that looking after a strong increase to the basic formula, which we'll take, we're going to see the very big day tomorrow, right? We see the financial forecast, which will then beget the financial targets that the various houses or bodies of government have. And then it will look real time about what are the priorities. And we know this from the governor, we're very thankful to hear the strong piece on the per pupil formula. We're also seeing some additional pieces for voluntary pre-K and a number of other things. And I think it's going to be interesting to see how the QCOM funding for the 13 schools in the queue, does that happen this session? Or if it doesn't, I think it will also give some momentum to having some funding in the second year of the biennium.
Excellent question, which leads me to, again, talking about timeline. I believe there's a timeline as early as October, correct?
Yeah, there's a, there was a November 15th, or October 15th deadline. There's a January 15th deadline, and a March 15th deadline. That was what it is this year. There's always a chance that it could change. But they've done that for the last several years. So we would have to refile our intent, you know, because remember, we did file an intent, which doesn't commit us to anything. But we would refile our intent after July 1. They'll let us know when we're able to do that.
Okay, excellent. Any further comments?
Okay. Then we will move on to our next item for discussion, which is the summary of the superintendent's mid-year evaluation. Just as a reminder to board members, there was a copy of the summary in the table file. So I will just really go through and review the summary of Dr. Hillman's mid-year performance appraisal. So again, Dr. Hillman's mid-year performance appraisal was for the review period of 7/116 through 1/717. So in light of those dates, Board Member Gorwitz did not complete an appraisal, as she took office after the review period. The evaluation form covers the many facets of the superintendent's job responsibilities. Board members provide numeric ratings on a 1 to 5 scale, 1 is low, 5 is high, for 50 job responsibilities organized around 10 major topics. In addition to completing the numeric ratings, board members provided additional comments. As the chair, I compiled and summarized all board members' inputs for Dr. Hillman. For the numeric ratings, means were calculated. If board members were unable to answer, they marked UA next to each item. This was also marked as part of the summary. All written comments by board members were shared verbatim, but were not attributed to a specific board member. I met one-on-one with Dr. Hillman on February 16 to review this appraisal. Board members gave Dr. Hillman a very strong performance, rating across all key areas. His overall average score was 4.7 on a five-point scale across the 50 areas. Board members' comments highlighted Dr. Hillman's strong performance and his accomplishments during the first six months of his tenure as the new superintendent of Northfield Public Schools. Below are, here are a few of the comments that were shared. "I am amazed when I consider how much has been accomplished over the last six months, such as big deal items, namely strategic planning, final steps of the approved facilities plan, and the new SubSec district. And then, Dr. Hillman's attention to the day-to-day needs, such as thinking outside the box on the substitute teacher shortage, or the more mundane future needs, such as the Bridgewater roof. The next annual report will be amazing." "I have heard from parents, community members, and teachers how much they appreciate Dr. Hillman's visibility in the community. One example, with the challenge of spinning, of setting up the new SubSec district, Dr. Hillman provided timely communications with community members with honesty and transparency." Another comment, "Without a doubt, one of Dr. Hillman's greatest strengths is his effective communication skills. One of his first actions as a new superintendent was to establish his hashtag Northfield Lead Blog as an effective way of communicating with key district stakeholders. Dr. Hillman frequently posts timely and informative updates on what is happening in the district. I respect and appreciate his communicating not only the successes, but also where challenges still exist. I believe this approach will go a long way in continuing to maintain a high level of trust with both the school and broader community." "Dr. Hillman has already exceeded my expectations for fostering a shared commitment to high expectations for all students. He has supported district teachers and staff in their work with Northfield Promise, in their seeking new shifts such as continuous improvement, and in thinking how we can capitalize on all of their great structures and processes we already have in place to do even better work. I'm excited to see where the next steps will go with shepherding the vision and near-term priorities." Another comment, "A superintendent faces a number of competing priorities. I am impressed with the way in which Dr. Hillman, so early in his tenure as a new superintendent, has been able to very effectively deal with the day-to-day issues of running the district while simultaneously working toward achieving long-range goals. Dr. Hillman is particularly good at communicating and at building relationships, and these seem to be priorities at the beginning of his tenure as superintendent. Dr. Hillman demonstrates exceptional leadership and commitment towards achieving the district goals." And the last one that, as a sample of those shared, "Overall, Dr. Hillman's leadership and vision have proven as outstanding as I had hoped. What I most appreciate is how, even though he is not new to the district, he has taken time in his new role to evaluate what is working and what could be working even better. I have heard from teachers, there's a positive sense of expectations and hope for the work ahead." So, in summary, board members gave Dr. Hillman a very positive evaluation for his first six months as superintendent. The numeric ratings board members assigned, as well as their narrative comments, gave strong support for his performance. Board members expressed great confidence in his leadership and his vision for moving the district forward. So we thank you for the hard work you've done, and we look forward to moving ahead. So do board members have any other comments?
I do, actually. It's not so much about the evaluation, which I agree with, and it looks like if this were a report card, you'd get an A, which I agree with. But my comment is just that this is the mid-year performance, so it's intended to be formative rather than summative. So I'm just wondering about, like, how this impacts the goals going forward that were part of the evaluation.
Okay. So as you recall, we had three district goals that, or Dr. Hillman has three superintendent goals, and those are for the year. So while there were two of them that had clearly been accomplished in the timeframe of this review cycle, there is a third one, actually, the social-emotional curriculum that remains as an outstanding goal. So we will establish new superintendent goals each year. So the substantive evaluation that we will do at the end of June would include, again, a review of those goals, and then we would come together as a board and establish goals for the 1718 school year.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Matt, you're doing a great job. Great to have you here. God bless you.
Thanks, Jeff.
I would be interested to hear what Ellen has to say, because she's very data-centric and smart. Ben, and just off the cuff on that, and then I'm just wondering what other evaluation types that other, just to see what we're doing here as far as superintendent evaluation and stuff is fine. But I think to lean more on the idea of vision and what our goals are for the district, and then how we're implementing that with our fearless leader. So anyway, I'll pass with that to Ellen, if she wants to comment. No pressure.
So are you asking what I thought of our evaluation form, or?
Well, just kind of a general question. And I know you're kind of, with your job and what you do, you're very, in analytics and stuff, just kind of your, you know, overview of evaluations, and then tying that in with vision of what a school, you know, board should be, and, you know, just general comments.
Well, what I liked about what we did this year, which we've never done before, is have a mid-year report, which I think is particularly useful, since Dr. Hillman was new to the position. But I think, I guess, having sort of, I don't know what you thought of it, Dr. Hillman, but having, as a board member, being able to comment and provide, knowing it was going to be formative, and provide that sort of evaluation that isn't like the end of the year, saying this is what we think, but instead, here's the direction we're going. And I really liked the fact that we had the goals, and particularly since we did all that strategic planning, we all know what those near-term priorities are. So I guess from an evaluation standpoint, I thought it was a strong way up for us to go forward this year.
I think that's a good question, Jeff. And I think that in addition to not only the mid-year appraisal, and then we did revise the form itself, but we haven't established goals in the past for a superintendent. And I think when you talk about vision, and then we talk about the goals, I think as we come together as a board and establish those for 1718, you know, we will have a better feel for doing that. And we will also have a strategic plan in place, which we actually didn't have in place when we established these goals. So I think that the other piece is that, of course, there's always these long-range goals. But in terms of evaluation, they would need to be goals that would be realistically accomplished within a year timeframe. So, you know, there's always that long view. But then, in terms of an evaluation and a goal, you would look at something that is reasonably accomplished in that 12-month timeframe.
And I always liked that idea of cutting edge and bleeding edge, and the idea of encouraging some of those other districts that maybe have some more resources to get out there and be on more the bleeding edge side, to, you know, to cut the new leadership ideas, but make the mistakes, you know, rather than, and then sit back and figure out that we can be on the cutting edge to follow up behind that. So, and again, to really, how many school districts are there? Is it 335?
About 312.
Okay, okay. Because I mean, you know, again, maybe picking 10 of kind of where we compare, and then how do we, I mean, I know we like to compare ourselves with the Golden Crescent, but we're not, you know, we're not Edina, we're not Eden Prairie, we're not that big a school. But I think that if we're, there's no reason, in a sense, that our standards aren't, you know, top of the, you know, our conference, and to be in that area. So, you know, what is, what is good leadership, and what is cutting and bleeding edge to encourage us to be one of those leaders, you know, in the out-states, for sure. So I think that's...
Okay. Great. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Excellent. And thank you, Dr. Hillman, for your excellent...
Thank you.
Okay. So let's move forward, then. We've worked through all items for discussion, so we will go on to items for individual action, which is a bid for the Bridgewater Roof Bonds. And again, there was some information as part of our table file to aid in the discussion of this. Action item.
Yes, and this evening, we have Andrea Yule from Ellers Incorporated here to talk with us about some very exciting news with the Bridgewater Roof Bonds. And I think you're going to be very pleased to hear some of the things that she has to say, because while we somewhat joke sometimes about getting all this exciting financial news, what you're going to hear tonight is actually very exciting about the financial management of the district, and how that actually has tied into something as mundane as a roof bond.
Okay. Hi, I'm Andrea from Ellers. I was here back in November with Joel Sutter, but he did most of the talking then, and he had to be in Elk River tonight. So he's sorry he couldn't be here. In front of you, you should have a sale day report that looks like this. And I'm just going to go over and highlight a few of the key points that happened with your bond sale today. And then there's also a resolution in front of you, too, that you will be hopefully acting on after I go over this. So back in November, we had you pass a resolution to authorize the issuance of the bonds. And at that time, we estimated $1,495,000 based on the roof, the estimate for the roofing project back then. And since then, you actually took the bids, and the project came in lower than we thought. So we were able to reduce the bonds down by quite a bit. And we did a revised pre-sale report at the end of January, based on those new numbers. And we estimated the par amount at that time to be $1,365,000. And today, when we sold the bonds, the way the financing structure worked out, we did even a little bit better than we thought we would. And so now you're only issuing $1,325,000, but with still enough money to fund your estimated project cost. So one of the key points of this is that your bonds are rated AA+, which helped you get a very good interest rate of 1.93%. And Matt and Val did a rating call with Standard and Poor's Credit Rating Agency. We did a lot of work, especially Val had to send in a lot of documents, put everything together, you know, and Matt and Val did a great job talking up your school district, your financial management, your programs, everything you're doing here. And they really liked what they heard. So if you flip to, towards the end, it's on the attachments page six, this is your actual rating report. And AA+ is, it's a really good rating. There are only, the only level higher is the AAA category, and only three districts in the whole state are AAA rated, Minnetonka, Wayzata, and Edina. And, you know, they're in the metro area, they have much higher property values than you, and it really says a lot about you that you were able to get, you know, this high. And they base the rating on a lot of things that you can control and a lot of things that you can't. So they do look at the economy and your location. And fortunately, you're within a commuting distance of the Twin Cities, and there's a lot of growth and things happening in, within the city, which we did talk about. And you can't control that, but it worked in your favor. And they also really liked your fund balance and your financial management policies, and the fact that right now you have a pretty moderate debt burden, and those are all things that you do control. So overall, they were very impressed by you, and you should be, you know, very proud that you have such a good rating. So if you want to flip back to the first page, this sort of just summarizes how the bonds came out. You received four bids this morning, which is a good number for this size and type of bond issue. We like to see between three and five. The winning bidder was United Bankers Bank from Bloomington, Minnesota. And if you turn the page again, actually to, this is the bid tab, so this is what underwriters actually submitted. And the First National Bank of Northfield actually bid as part of a syndicate with them, which means they bought a piece of your bonds, which is kind of neat, because when we sell bonds, school districts often ask, like, can the local banks buy into this? And they can if they bid as part of a syndicate with a large underwriter. So, and you also had bids from Kansas City, Missouri, Northland Securities, which is also in Minneapolis, and Baird out of Milwaukee. So a lot of interest from all over the Midwest. Going back to the first page, the, so the total principal that you're issuing is $1,325,000. You got a re-offering premium of almost $80,000, which means they offer you more money up front, so you can borrow less. And in exchange, you pay a higher interest rate, but on a smaller par amount. So that all worked out, and came out with a true interest cost of 1.93%. So we automatically award the bonds to whoever gives the lowest true interest cost bid. Your cost of issuance was $30,793. That covers the fee for Ellers, your Standard and Poor's Credit Rating Report, your bond attorney, and your paying agent, and the county certificates. And the total principal and interest over the life of these will be $1,546,808. And based on the estimates we gave you at the end of January, this is about $47,000 less principal and interest than we estimated. Back then, we had built in a cushion in case rates went up, because things have been a little unpredictable lately. Not that they're ever very predictable, but, so rates have stayed stable, which also worked out well for you. If you want to just turn to, see past the bid tab, and then... If you want to just turn to, you pass the bid tab, and then page three of the attachments just shows sort of the flow of funds, the par amount, and then the premium, and then underwriters' discount is what the underwriter pays themselves. That was 6,293 cost of issuance, and then the deposit to, to the construction fund is that magic number we were trying to reach based on the bids for your project, which was 1,367,000. It's a couple thousand dollars more, just because they sell bonds in $5,000 increments, so we can't hit it exactly. And then page four shows your LTFM program revenue, so you are paying for these out of revenue that you're levying either way. You're just taking money out of that pay-as-you-go pot of money, we like to call it, and dedicating it for these bond payments. So, you can see in the third column, LTFM revenue, that's what you get every year, and then you get about 36% aid from the state, so about $580,000 a year, the rest is levy. And then the right half shows what your payments on these bonds are going to be, and then the far right column is how much you'll still have left over for all the other projects on your tenure plan, and these bonds are only using about 10% of your total facilities maintenance revenue. So, does, does anyone have any questions?
Board members, since this is an item for individual action, prior to any questions or discussion, is there a motion to approve the resolution awarding the sale determining, determining the form and details, authorizing the execution, delivery, and registration, and providing for the payment of general obligation facilities maintenance funds, series 2017A? Moved by Margaret. Is there a second?
Second by Ellen.
Okay. Questions, comments, discussion? Anyone? Clear? Good. Good.
We can take a moment to recognize Al Murdois.
Absolutely.
She hides over there during this kind of stuff, but I think that what we all know is Val's work, and a lot of the work that we've all done together, but Val's collectively our financial voice, and when we're on the call with Standards and Poor's, there's some pretty good questions that come forward, and we've received a tremendous amount of support from Andrea and the folks at Ellers, but Val is really the person who, where the, when the rubber meets the road, it's Val who has to answer the questions. And I cannot emphasize enough, AA+ is pretty awesome, and being the continuous improvement, improvement person, I might, I am. I asked, well, what would it take us to get to AAA? And I was very politely told, AA+ is probably where we're going to stay, because there's just a significant difference in tax base and some other things. And again, we are not a bank, we are a school system designed to educate kids, but when we have been financial stewards, like we have been, and Val's shepherding us on that, the fact is that we're saving some significant dollars over the life of this bond, because we're able to get a lower interest rate, because we have that high rating. And that's a lot of good decision-making on your part, it's a lot of good work in the day-to-day on Val's part. So, I'm very happy that the, the, the bond, the roof bond came together very well, but at the end of the day, that double plus is really the external validation of really the, the entire school district's financial stewardship, and it also says a lot about the Northfield community, of how we all work together to have an excellent school system with a very solid financial base. So, I'm happy about all the other sales, but we did save, I believe, approximately $50,000 over the life of the bond, because the interest rate came in lower than what we had projected. So, $50,000 is nothing to shake a stick at over 10 years, we'll take it. So, thank you to Ellers for your very capable work in helping us get it to this point, and we really appreciate the partnership that we have with you.
Yes, Andrea, thank you very much for being here. So, Margaret?
In addition to thanking Val, I think our superintendent and our past superintendent deserve, the administration really here is very good with fiscal responsibility, and I think our voters should be very proud of that fact, that we're great educators, but they're great with, with our money as well, and it's very reassuring.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Any other final comments or questions prior to vote? Okay. We have a motion and a second for the resolution, which is a roll-call vote. Tavita?
Hello?
Hi.
Clantrell?
Hi.
Iverson?
Hi.
Hardy?
Hi.
Gerwitz?
Hi.
And Pritchard?
Hi.
Excellent. Thank you again, Andrea.
Thank you, Andrea.
And echo, of course, as, as a collective board, we echo Dr. Hillman's comments. Thank you, Val. Okay.
I just, yes, I need just two quick signatures before I go, that I need right away, and then I'm going to leave a packet of paperwork for you.
Val, you'll have to sign since Noel's home.
Okay.
This is the deputy clerk.
So, you need Julie to sign something?
Yes, I mean, it's.
All right.
Deputy clerk.
Absolutely.
So, just there.
Right here.
Yeah, no date.
You moved on that execution piece really quickly. That's good.
And there's one on the next page, too, just the exact same thing. And there's a bunch of other stuff. You can do it after the meeting, or later. Since Noel's not here, I think some of it needs to wait for him to mostly chair.
Well, and Val's the deputy clerk, she's authorized to sign, so.
Oh, okay. Yeah, then root, whatever you want. There's a prepaid envelope, mail it back when you're here.
Great. Andrea, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Excellent. So, that concludes our items for individual action. We'll go on to items for consent. So, let's move on to the consent grouping. As a reminder, there were, I think there were not any personal items in the table file.
There was, yeah, there was some, there were some appointments.
Oh, I'm sorry, there were. Exactly. Okay. So, so board members, you had a chance to look at the items in the table file, so is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Amy. Is there a second? Second by Rob. Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is items for information in your packets. We have the, this will be the first review of the 2018-19 school year calendar. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, and so in the packet, remember, we're doing a calendar that's two years out, and so that's a, a new thing for us, because we had adopted two years' worth of calendars last year, so the 17-18 calendar is already settled, and you'll be surprised that, you know, Donita started getting calls actually probably last October, actually about the 17-18 calendar. We usually get those calls pretty early. It's more and more common that parents have to bid their vacation quite a bit out, so I'm really pleased with being able to have two years of calendar, or two years of calendars on the table. What you'll see is this is a relatively straightforward, very close to a lot of the other things that we've done over the years. If you look also, part of the second page that you have would have been the, the, let's see, I don't think that we, yeah, the first page that you have was actually the district interests in the calendar, and so, of course, maintaining 174 student contact days, identifying snow days, the statutory post-labor start, completion for students by the end of the first full weekend, June. These are the same kinds of things that we talked about over, over the years, so I know that you know these already, but just, you always think that you need to review those, so that we're providing you a calendar that meets those particular needs to the best of our ability. We can never always get every one of them, but we try to get as close. So, you see that we actually, just one of the major changes in the 18-19 calendar is that traditionally, for several years, the day before Thanksgiving has been a professional development day, which means no students, but teachers here working for that day. That will be a no-school day, no-teacher day altogether, and then the key thing is we move that professional development date to before school starting, so we'd actually have five days of pre-service workshop in August of 2018. Then you'll notice that we have a holiday break, winter break, that begins on the 20th of December, returning on the 2nd of January. You'll also see that Dr. King's birthday is also a no-student, no-teacher day as well. Spring break, the fourth week in March that year. Closing up shop on the 7th of June, with graduation on June 2nd. So, this is the first reading. Of course, there are questions tonight, I certainly can do my best to answer them, and then in addition, we'll bring this back for, for you at the next board meeting for you to take action on it.
Okay. Questions or comments initially on the calendar? Dr. Hillman said this is the first opportunity you've had to see it, and we would, we look to approve this calendar at our next board meeting, so between now and then, if there are questions, as you get a better chance to, to review it. Rob, you have a question?
I think I probably asked this question last year, but are we still required to pass a resolution about Columbus Day?
We are.
Sort of hanging around until we do that.
So, the key thing would be that we've typically done the resolution regarding Christopher Columbus Day, usually in probably July, so it, the calendar is usually approved before we do that resolution, but we would still be required at this point to take that resolution, and actually, that's just a piece that we have on, Donita has on our checklist for in July, that we ask you to take care of that.
So, for some reason, we didn't pass that resolution, that would be an extra school day, or an extra holiday, I mean?
Right. So, if we weren't to pass that particular piece, we would have to, I, I would venture to guess, we'd have to actually make that day a holiday, and then what we would have to do is find another day in which we were to bring that back, though I would, I would just be very cautious if the board were to have concerns about the Christopher Columbus federal holiday that we've traditionally taken off. It would be good to know earlier, because once we publish the calendar, parents really rely on that. We, we try never, we try to make as few changes to the calendars as, as possible from time to time. Well, very rarely does it happen, but you have the ability, of course, at any time to change the calendar as the Board of Education, but if there were reservations about that, we would certainly want to know earlier, so we would be able to make sure that we were to address that.
Just a point of clarification, I thought we passed that resolution so that we could have a school board meeting that evening, not necessarily to have.
But we declare that it's not a holiday in the Northfield schools.
Right. And it was primarily for the purpose of having a school board meeting?
Well, necessarily.
Okay. I thought because it, sometimes it had crossed that, that that's what we had to do. Okay.
We can get some additional information on what it would mean if, if that's what, but I think what Donita is saying is correct, that we just, we passed the resolution for.
That it's not a holiday.
It's not a holiday here, yes.
Here in Northfield schools, which allows us then to have a school board meeting.
Correct.
If it should, or, you know, respond as the second Monday of October.
Okay. Well, and then in terms of school board meetings, so then, we have always tried to not have school board meetings during spring break, when families are away, and, and not able to participate in the board meeting if, if they were to choose to come and, and do any sort of participation, et cetera. So, that Monday would actually be a school board meeting, 25th. So, then we would probably just try to plan the agenda around having one board meeting that month.
Well, you'll need to take act, like, you have it scheduled for a board meeting this second, fourth Monday of March.
Right.
You have not acted to not have a board meeting.
Yeah, I don't think we would need to act now. We would just have to probably, I mean, I suppose if.
But even for this year.
But I'm pretty sure that's after spring break.
No, that's because it's the teacher, it's a teacher workday.
Right, and that will be, would be true on that Monday, in that board calendar as well.
No, actually, it's. It's actually part of the 18-19 calendar. This one's actually the beginning, that Monday's actually the beginning of spring break that year. So, you know, I think the key thing for that piece is deciding about those board meetings is something that's typically done, probably because we've only adopted one calendar at a time, you know, at the beginning of that school year, and so, the fact would be, my sense would be, the tradition that this board has had would be not to hold that second board meeting in March, it's happened many times, is my understanding, and so, when we get, and the key thing is, sort of, this is two years out. I mean, so this is the 18-19 year, and I think the key thing would be that, that would be a piece that in July or August of that year, we would go ahead and take that action.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to point that out. Margaret? Also, the 14th of January, that is a holiday. Would we be meeting that night? That would be a school board meeting.
So, what we'll do is, we'll take a look at the, you know, I, I would say that we would probably, we could look at that like we look at Memorial Day, if you know about, if you think about that, there are times, there's, when we have Memorial Day where that falls, we typically have the board meeting on that Tuesday night, and so, I think the key thing would be in that year, that may very well be that the night of January 15th would be a Tuesday board meeting that year.
Yeah. Excellent. Thanks for catching that as well. Okay. Yeah, no, nothing that really affects, obviously, the approval, but just seeing a couple dates where maybe we will have to make a, a few adjustments. Obviously closer, much closer end of the time. Okay. Out of curiosity, how far in advance do you have to advertise an open meeting?
Seventy, an open meeting, 72 hours. Right, Donita? Open meeting long?
No, I'm just saying, you know, if you moved a school board meeting, you would just advertise that well ahead.
Oh, we'd do it before the school.
We would do it in July, yeah.
Right, that's what I meant. Just out of curiosity. Thank you.
Okay. Good. Good discussion. All right, so as you review this and have any other questions, contact Dr. Hillman, and we will bring this back to you at our next board meeting. Okay. That's it for items for information for tonight's meeting. So, our future meetings, just a reminder, a week from tomorrow, we have a school board